Seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting. We'll have our city clerk please read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Ansley's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. During the COVID-19 outbreak, the Tappanish City Council will not accept in-person public comments. All members of the public wanting to comment on city council agenda items. May submit written comments to include your name and address for the record. In advance by email to cityclerk@cityoftappanish.us. By 4:00 PM on December 14, 2020, to be read during the meeting. Call in information for listen-only mode is 253-215-8782. Meeting ID 894-66841212. Passcode 703204. Email cityclerk@cityoftappanish.us or call 509-865-6754 with questions.
Thank you, and we now do the roll call.
Mayor Oaks.
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra.
Present.
Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show we have full attendance and a forum.
Hey, would all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic.
Very good. With item three, approve the agenda. And entertain a motion if there's any.
Make a motion, go ahead and approve the agenda's entirety.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item four. Recognition of service. For a police officer Dirk Knight, is that right?
It's Officer Derek Knight.
It is Derek, okay.
Yes, thank you, Councilman, and thank you for the opportunity to recognize him in front of the council. On December 7th of 2020, Officer Knight responded to a 17-year-old unresponsive male within the city of Tappanish. And quickly determined that it was likely that the male was suffering from an opioid overdose. Prior to EMT's arrival, Officer Knight administered naloxone, Narcan, and within a couple minutes, the 17-year-old recovered and has survived to continue on. And, you know, it's my belief that without Officer Knight's actions, that young man probably wouldn't be here today. And as I was doing some research on this, this is the third time Officer, actually no, it's the fourth time. Officer Knight has administered naloxone in the last, since say June, to unresponsive overdose subjects. And so I want to say that I appreciate his actions. I know that the community appreciates your actions, Derek. And the police department is awarding him a life-saving bar for his uniform. And so, thank you, Derek, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Chief, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, yay, thank you so much. How about Derek?
Thank you, Council. Look, we even do fireworks, there you go. Alright, that's what we do in class, sorry. But thank you so much for all your hard work and your dedication. And I know those families appreciate you saving those individuals' lives, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, Chief.
Well, we appreciate the training that you, you step up and take and, and the quick decision-making that, that you're able to make to save lives. So, thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you, Lance, it's my pleasure to work for Tappanish.
Good job.
Glad to have you.
Thanks.
Right, we'll move to item 4B. Retired Recreation and Aquatics Manager James Cole. There we go. The City of Tappanish Distinguished Service Award, James R. Cole. In recognition and appreciation for your valuable contributions in building the city's recreation program and adding to the quality of life for the community's youth. Recreation and Aquatics Manager, Parks and Recreation Director from April 1st, 2008 through May 29th, 2020. Thank you. Anyone have any thing they want to add? Well, I think James was on here earlier, I don't know what happened, but yeah, I just want to thank him for his service.
Yeah. I'll second that. He's.
Very good job.
Yes, thank you very much for your ser- service, James. We really appreciate everything that you've done for our kids and the youth of, for the city of Tappanish. And for the many years of service that you've dedicated to them, thank you.
I just also want to say thank you to James for all that he did for all of our families and the youth in our community. You gave the youth healthy and things to do, and, and I think that you're going to be very missed. I, I think you are very missed.
James, we really do miss you and all of your hard work. I know you were the one out there beating the bushes and trying to get people to donate money for this fabulous cause of Parks and Recs. And without you, I don't know if that's going to happen anymore because you had your connections and people were very loyal to you. So without that, the city's going to really miss your presence and your hard work in beating the bushes for money. So thank you so much for everything you did for the funds, but also for our children and the parents in our community.
And I'd like to add to that, James. That you get, you have the, the recognition and the appreciation of generations of, of, of kids in your programs. I know that you had, I think you even had grandkids of people that, that you, programs like baseball, basketball, and swimming lessons that you, that you, that you provided for our community. So thank you so much for that, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, James, appreciate all the fine work you've done for the years you've been here. You'll be, you'll be missed.
Yes, you will be missed.
Guess we're ready to move on to 4C. Which is Retired City Council Member Blaine Thorington. Reads City of Tappanish Distinguished Service Award, Blaine R. Thorington. In recognition of your many years of visionary guidance, exceptional leadership, and unconditional commitment serving the, on this, on the Tappanish City Council as council member, mayor, pro tem, and mayor. From August 25th, 1997, through April 28th of 2020. Thanks, Blaine, I missed the slap on the back, but.
You really are missed, Blaine, you don't know how much we miss you. I mean, that doesn't even say everything that you did. I mean, you were on almost every committee for the city that I can think of. You're also very dedicated to the Lions. I love when you're out there making the steaks, and I don't even like meat that much, but it's great to have you out there and knowing how to make my steaks. So thank you so much for always being there.
Well, let me say this. You know, it's been quite a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been quite an adjustment, and I told the PEA before the meeting that, yeah, it does feel like home now, but I, I'm still in Tappanish practically every single day, I still work there. It is, I still consider Tappanish, when I was there for 67 years, it's hard not to consider Tappanish home. I enjoy working there still, don't know how long I'm going to be working yet. I still see town, I, I'm still connect, what I believe, I'm still well-connected with the city, with the Public Works Department especially. So, I'm very much appreciative of the recognition tonight. I wish I, we could, I really wish we could all be together, I'm sure everyone agrees with that. But as I see each and every one of you in town, and I do see, I see you, you know, some of you now and then. I, it is, I, I'm touched, I'm touched that you have recognized me in this way. And I do miss, I've been told that I have been missed, but I miss all of you. And, and let me say that when you were going through the agenda looking for a second tonight, I came about this close, seconding the motion myself. Old habits are hard to break, so again, thank you. If you don't mind, I think I'll just sit in and watch the rest of the meeting.
I too want to just thank you, Blaine. The number of years that you serve the city is truly inspiring, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being so dedicated. Because it's truly a wonderful thing, you know, to give so much of your time and service to the city and your experience, and to me, you're a great example. And I just hope that, that other people feel inspired by what you did, and not only for the love that you have for the city, but also for the residents and for working so hard to help just kind of guide the city in the right direction, and I know I take it to heart, and I'm so thankful for everything you've done because it's, it's a huge commitment, you know?
As I said, and I'll repeat this, I still, even though I don't, it's not my home anymore, but I'm there every day, and I will always consider myself, you know, a Tappanish lifer, so whether that be right or wrong, and, and I'll tell you something, this might sound a little morbid, but just to cement that thought in your heads. My final resting place has already been established out in Tappanish, so I truly am a Tappanish lifer. So thank you all again.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and I look forward to seeing everybody again soon, thank you again.
Yeah, yes, um, I'm one of those people that definitely looked up to you. I remember being in high school, I just thought you were the coolest person ever because you were reading at our church at St. Louisius. You were mayor of our town, you were driving my bus, so, you know, I really thank you for, for the example, for the service that you gave to Tappanish and for your leadership, and especially being new to the city council, I really want to thank you for your mentorship. You sat next to me and you guided me and you encouraged me, so, so thank you so much for everything you've done.
You make a, you're going to make an old man cry.
I try not to cry.
Thank you.
Media making us cry.
Oh, you know what, Nyla, it's, it's so awesome that you mentioned that because for many years, we used to live out of town, and Blaine was the bus driver for my children. And my children still recall that Blaine would point out different trees and things. And one of the ones that my kids learned and had never forgotten was the forsythia tree that we had in the front of our yard out on Roeberry Way. And my children would come home and say, oh yeah, that's a forsythia, and I'm like, how in the heck do you know that? Oh, Blaine, our blessed driver is the one that would point out different trees and stuff. And I'll have you know that if it wasn't for Blaine playing country music on the bus, my kids would not be fans of country music because we hardly ever played that, and my kids would be singing country in the car, I'm like, how in the world do you know that? Oh, it's because of Blaine! So, Blaine, you've touched many, many lives, and I'm sure that there's many residents and, and youth and children that have so many stories about how you have touched their lives, and, and again, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much.
Let me, oh, PEA, just let me just piggyback on that country western music thing. Kids would get on there and they'd want to say, they'd want me to play some different, you know, rock station or something, I said, this radio only plays two kinds of music. You guys can choose, I don't care, either country or western, it's your choice.
That's so awesome.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Tell your kids I said, hey.
I sure will, Blaine.
Well, Blaine, it's probably a good thing that we're not all in the same room right now, I'm sure we'd be having one great big group hug, so. I want to thank you for your service, big guy, and if anybody could be called Mr. Tappanish, it is you, so again, thank you. This plaque that you're receiving tonight is, is, will never be enough, but it is one way that we can say thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren, that means a lot, and I know you've given, given your, you know, Southwest time as well, so thank you again.
Thanks, Blaine, for your service with the city, what you've done with, with the school, and, and for the council and everything. I wish I could have gotten a couple more years working with you on the council to learn more, you know, I'm still in the learning process, and, but, you know, you're going to be sorely, sorely missed on the council, so I wish you the best of luck, and, and God bless.
Yeah, George, thank you. I know it kind of happened fast, one minute, yes, and one minute out, in, and out. Things just, I didn't anticipate things coming together as quick as they did, and and just kind of what the real estate market was and still is at this time, and I look forward to seeing all of you when I'm still in Tappanish every day, don't know when I'm going to retire yet, I still love working, so I, I have a reason to go to town, Tappanish every day, so thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Blaine.
You bet, thank you for the award, bye-bye.
All right. Move on to item five. Advanced public comments received by 4:00 PM on December 14th, 2020, to be read by staff at the meeting. City clerk.
Mayor, let the record show the city did not receive public comment by the stated deadline.
Very good. In that case, we'll move on to item six. The consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda have been provided to each council member for review and considered to be routine, or have been previously discussed and will be adopted by one motion and a vote without discussion. However, if a council member desires, any item on this agenda will be discussed before any action is taken on it. Item 6A. Approve the minutes of the November 23rd, 2020 regular council meeting. Item 6B. Approve minutes of the December 7th, 2020 study session. Item 6C. Approve payroll checks numbered 35114 through 35124, and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $163,425.18 dated December 11th, 2020. For 6D. Approve claims checks numbered 92918 through 93033, and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $314,773.20 dated December 14th, 2020. Would entertain a motion.
So move to approve the agenda in its enti- the consent agenda in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Sovedra and seconded by Councilman Garcia to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to new business, item seven. 7A. AB 20-059, ordinance 2020-15, budget amendment for 2020, city manager, Hoid.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council, tonight is a night of updates, so we'll, I'll defer to Debbie Zabel, our administrative services dir- director, to talk about the proposed budget amendments.
Great, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, and former Councilwoman Blaine Thorington, it's very nice to see you. I miss you during our budget process, you always had great questions, kept me on my toes. And so for tonight, Council, this is our last meeting on budget until next year. And this is our annual budget amendment for the current year's budget, and we are required by the RCW to do a budget amendment if we have over-expended any of our expenditure light items, which throughout the year we have. There is an attached ordinance that does set the new budget for 2020, and I have also included the attached listing of the different funds and the items where we did go over on budget. We have three funds that we have reduced the budget on, and one of those in particular is for the public safety grants. Because of COVID, we did not receive the full amount for the fire truck from the casino grant, so we've had to reduce that budget because of that, so. I would be happy to answer any questions any of you have regarding any of the items included in the budget amendment.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Did Clara second that?
Yes.
Oh, Clara, thanks, I, I didn't quite catch that, thank you. Had a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Belton and seconded by Councilwoman Jimenez to adopt ordinance 2020-15 budget amendment for 2020. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item 7B. AB 20-060, ordinance 2020-16, amending TMC chapters 13.16 and 8.10. City manager, Hoid.
Thank you, Mayor, before you tonight is ordinance number 202016. It reestablishes and clarifies the language for the 25% outside the rate for Tappanish utility users, utilities meaning water, sewer, and garbage. Since the 1930s, council at that time adopted the outside-the-city rate of additional 25% higher for water users. And as well as for, in 1950s, they also did the same for sewer and, and garbage. This language is spread out through our, our TMC, and sometimes it's confusing trying to find that. So it's staff's recommendation to update that language and put it in a fashion where it's easier to find. And so what we'd like, what we'd like to do is, is leave the sewer chapter 13-44, which states on 13-44-090, it says, "Surcharge for outside-the-city users. An additional charge of 25% shall be made for all sewer services provided outside the city limits." We, we would like to add the same language for garbage in the garbage chapter, which is 810, so it would be 810. What is it? 810-172, surcharge for outside users, it's the same language. An outside charge of 25% shall be made for all garbage services provided outside the city limits. And then to the same thing we'd like to do for water, chapter 13-16. We need to correct some language there. In that, in that language, 16, 1316050, it talks about multiple unit dwellings and the computation of the bill. And then down below, it says, "Be an additional charge of 25%." We'd like to strike that language of "be" and create a new section. 16, excuse me, 1316050, with that same language we use for the other two. "Surcharge for outside-the-city users, an additional charge of 25% shall be made for all water services provided outside the city lab- limits." That clarifies the language as the same language for water, sewer, and refuse, and it makes it easier for staff as well as any customer that, that would like an explanation of that.
Okay.
So I guess staff is, we're asking for a motion to approve ordinance 2020-16, amending the, the language for outside-the-city utility use.
I'm going to adopt the ordinance 202016.
I'll second that.
Hey, thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Seha, seconded by Councilwoman Duval to adopt ordinance 2020-16, amending TNC chapters 13.16 and 8.10. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Having none, we'll move on to 7C.
Thank you.
AB 20-061, Resolution 2020-57, fee schedule update. City manager, Hoid.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to defer to, by, Administrative Services Director Zabel to talk about the proposed fee resolution update.
Well, thank you again, Mayor and Council, this is our last fee resolution of the year, it's the, it's an annual update to the fee resolution, and it is for the fees for our cemetery, so that they become effective January 1st. Council did make a decision in 2017 to have an automatic fee increase of 2% for the cemetery fees and a 10% for perpetual care fees. So we can continue to maintain our beautiful Elmwood Cemetery. The fees themselves are specifically located on page four of your attachment, if you'd like to review those. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hearing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I motion to adopt, or to approve resolution 2020-57, updating the Tappanish master fee schedule.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Duval, seconded by Councilwoman Jimenez to approve resolution 2020-57, the fee schedule update. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? None? We'll move on to item 7D. AB 20-062, Resolution 2020-58, inter-fund loan.
Thank you, Mayor, Resolution 2020-58 pertains to an inter-fund loan for the street department. And so I could defer to our administrative services directors, Debbie Zabel, for any explanation.
Thank you, Council. We have done a similar loan a few years ago, and this is a just in case loan. So we did make reimbursement request today for one of our projects. But just in case we do not get our reimbursement before the end of the year, we cannot let this fund have a negative balance. So in the event that we do not receive our reimbursement, we would make a an inter fund loan from the general fund to the capital street fund. And when the reimbursement is received after January, we would then pay the general fund back with that reimbursement. So if we do not need the loan at your first council meeting in January, we will bring another resolution forward for council to cancel this loan. And if we don't receive the reimbursement, we will again utilize the loan. So are there any questions regarding the need for inter fund loans?
No, but I just want to mention that if we do give the loan, they always pay back with interest.
They do, and we use the state's local government investment pool interest rate for that.
Is, what is the interest rate? Is it varying?
It's like point zero one eight.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash fifty eight inter fund loan.
I'll second that.
You have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Savedra, seconded by Councilwoman DeVall to approve resolution twenty twenty dash five eight, the inter fund loaned. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on to item seven E. A B twenty dash zero six three, resolution twenty twenty dash five nine, the official newspaper for two thousand and twenty one. City manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll defer to our city clerk Heidi Yohas.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you is a proposed resolution to designate the next official newspaper for the city for two thousand and twenty one. The city is required to do this invitation for bid each year. And this year I did the bid, and we only received one solicited bid by the deadline. And that newspaper is Sunnyside Sun. So the proposed resolution is to designate the Sunnyside Sun as the official newspaper for the city of Tappanish from January first two thousand twenty one through December thirty first two thousand and twenty one. Do you have any questions?
I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept that bid from the Sunnyside Sun to be the newspaper for the city for the December, the twenty twenty one, I guess, year, calendar year.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez, seconded by Councilman Garcia to approve resolution twenty twenty dash five nine, official newspaper for two thousand twenty one. Any further discussion?
I just also want to make sure that we add that we also authorize the city manager to sign the bid for the contract for the official newspaper.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bringing none, we'll move on to seven F. Sorry, what?
That.
A B twenty dash zero six four, resolution twenty twenty dash sixty, declaring property surplus. City manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. I would once again defer to our city clerk Heidi Yohas.
You're muted. You're muted. You need to unmute.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I, I move around too much here, so I mute myself. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This proposed resolution is to declare certain property that is with the Public Works Department as surplus, as it is either not operable or it's no longer of use. The items are listed on schedule A, exhibit A, and they will be put on public surplus. Do you have any questions?
I'd entertain a motion then.
I motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixty, declaring items listed on exhibit A as surplus.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion on the floor from Councilwoman DeVall, seconded by Councilwoman Garcia to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero six zero, declaring property surplus. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any? Any opposing? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven G. A B twenty dash zero six five, resolution twenty twenty dash sixty one, declaring need for housing authority of the city of Yakima to operate in the city of Tappanish. City manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash sixteen authorizes authorizes the housing authority of the city of Yakima to acquire, rehabilitate, operate rental housing within the city of Tappanish under the Farmers Home Administration Program. This is basically an update to a resolution that the city council adopted back in December twelfth nineteen eighty three. It's updating the, the language there. So it's basically the city of Tappanish, city council declares that there's a need for the housing authority to exercise its power in the city by providing affordable and safe housing. And in, and my resolution, excuse me, R C W thirty five eighty two oh seven oh dash thirteen, the housing authority has the opera, has the ability or the authority to exercise powers outside its boundaries. So basically what it means, the city of Tappanish City Council authorizes the, the housing authority of the city of Yakima to operate and acquire and rehabilitate rental housing inside the city limits of Tappanish.
Is there any question?
Um. Mayor Oaks, can I ask a question to City Manager Lance?
Sure.
So I, I saw that they've already. This brought up a long time ago, but what wasn't clear to me was if we do this every year, I just don't remember doing this every year.
No, this is an update of that nineteen eighty three document. So evidently, that's been quite a few years, and evidently, the the Farmers Home Administration Program is requiring new language or updated language. So the Yakima Housing Authority for the city of Yakima can operate.
They're, they currently already do. They just want us to.
They're currently here. They've got numerous properties that they, 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 they built and administrate and rent here in Tappanish.
So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixty one, declaring the need for the housing authority of the city of Yakima to operate within the boundaries of the city of Tappanish.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Savedra, seconded by Councilwoman Jimenez to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixty one, declaring need for housing authority of the city of Yakima to operate in the city of Tappanish. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we will go to items seven H. A B twenty dash zero six six, resolution twenty twenty dash six two, approved local agreement for a bait vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. This pertains to an inter local agreement for a bait car. I would defer to our interim chief of police, Tim Bardwell, for further information.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is regarding a council's consideration of an inter local agreement for a bait car program. The agreement would be between five different agencies or municipalities. Tappanish, Moxie, Sunnyside, Grandview, and the Yakima County Sheriff's Office. A bait car is a proactive approach to address the, the stolen vehicle issues that we have throughout all our communities in the valley. Yakima Sheriff's Office is going to provide us with a vehicle, a suitable vehicle for the, for the program. And the startup cost for the program is eight thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars ninety cents. And then two thousand per year for maintenance of, of the, of the items that we put in the vehicle. I don't know how much detail I need to go into regarding a bait vehicle. They're pretty well known what they do. Does Council have any questions regarding what a bait vehicle is? Okay, it can also be used for anti theft. We can, you know, place items in the car, park it in a high theft area and, and also target car prowlers that way as well. So once the inter local agreement is signed, it would be in effect indefinitely. The I L A may be canceled for any reason by any parties with a thirty day written notice to the Tappanish Police Department. We would be administering the, the bait car program. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding it.
Chief, I got a question about the bait car. Often will it be used here in Tappanish?
Well, I guess it'll depend on manpower and how many people we have on the street, and I would like to use it frequently. It'll be shared between five different agencies, however. I would say at least once a month, maybe twice.
Did we have, did we have bait cars in the past? I believe we had. Did we have bait cars in the past?
The sheriff's office has in the past, and I know that we've used it, not during my time here, though.
Okay. Do you know if they, you probably don't know this, if they were successful while we did use them in our city?
They did have some success. I don't know about their successes in Tappanish itself.
Okay.
We have used him here in the city in the past because I know it was brought to council on a certain one. I know Lauren's going, yeah. We remember that. Yeah, so it's been used. Yeah, it served its purpose.
I just have a quick question on the budget chief. As far as the dollars that we're talking about and, and what line item would that would come from budget wise?
That I can't answer off the top of my head. Debbie, can you help me with that?
We could utilize either the criminal justice fund for that cost or the patrol budget at a general fund.
But the, the money is budgeted then.
It is not, is not budgeted for next year, but we do have the ability to add that to the budget. We can bring forward a budget amendment for that.
Okay.
And Debbie, the money's there, so we could actually use it?
Yes, we do have, we have plenty of fund balance that we could utilize those funds for, yes. In, in either one of the criminal justice fund or the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion then. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Belton, seconded by Councilwoman Jimenez to approve resolution twenty twenty dash six two, approve inter local agreement for a beat vehicle. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven I, A B twenty dash zero six seven, resolution twenty twenty dash six three, approve collective bargaining agreement for dispatchers.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the, the team, team serves collective bargaining agreement for the police dispatch. Defer to Debbie Zabel, our administrative services director.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have before you the first bargaining agreement for the Tappanish dispatchers. We have been working with the dispatchers and the local team sir seven sixty to remove the team, the dispatchers from the general bargain agreement into their own bargaining agreement. It's the great success working with the dispatchers on this. The three year contract does provide for, for three years of cost of living with the first year being a six percent cost of living. The purpose for that sizable increase is our need to get the pay for our dispatchers up to a comparable rate with other dispatchers in the area. We've, we've, we've been unable to keep dispatchers and we've been running at least a one person vacancy for the last two years. Today we had oral boards for two, two people to do oral boards for our vacant position. One person called to cancel, and the other person did not show up. So we're going to go back to the drawing board again to advertise for a dispatcher, and hopefully with the increase in pay, we will get some more traction for the position. So it is a good contract, and the dispatchers have all voted on it. And again, it was a mutually agreeable contract for both sides. So with council's approval, staff would recommend approving the contract with the Tappanish dispatchers.
Deb, do you think that that is why we're not getting people to stay and people to apply is because the salary? Or are there other issues?
Well, salary is going to be part of it, but it is, it is a pretty challenging job. I mean, it's, it's, it's shift work. It is dealing with, you know, the ugly side of the world, and there's not a lot of commendation, and you it, it's a difficult job. So I commend the dispatchers for what they do because it's, I don't, I don't know if a lot of people are have the ability to keep up and do the job that they do.
And I, I just want to thank our dispatchers. I mean, they, they do have a tremendous job that they, that they have huge responsibility. They're answering phones, they're watching over our officers, and I can do that job, to tell you the truth. I mean, they're micromanaging and multitasking like you wouldn't believe. And those gals in there are just great. Also make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty sixty three.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Seah, seconded by Councilwoman DeVall to approve resolution twenty twenty dash six three, approve collective bargaining agreement for dispatchers. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed? Moving on to seven K J.
Before we step out of that, I would like to congratulate both sides of that negotiation process of working together, having patience. It took a year to get there and to come up with a, an appropriate contract that's fair for, for, for everyone. So we're excited to be able to present that to council tonight. And thank you for ratifying that. So. Sorry.
Thank you. Item seven J, A B twenty dash zero six eight. A B twenty dash zero six eight. Declare the Lincoln Avenue, Dayton Avenue, and Beach Street Improvement Projects Complete and Start the Sixty-Day Lean Process. City manager Hoits.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to defer to Rocky Wallace, our Public Works Superintendent.
Mayor and Council, the Lincoln Avenue, Dayton Avenue, and Beach Street Improvement Projects were substantially complete on August eleventh, twenty twenty. The project has been completed satisfactorily. H L A, the city's engineer, recommends the city declare this project complete and start the sixty-day lean process. Are there any questions?
So Rocky, I know that one of the things that we're doing is that we're putting a cover or something on all those storm drain things, remember? That I brought it up one time because we had that flash flood kind of thing. Did they go through the whole area and take all those covers off so that now the water can actually go into the drain?
Yes, that that was part of the sewer improvement project. The covers that were on the drains over at Lincoln Dayton Beach, those were also removed, yes.
Okay, so even the ones that, because I know when I asked about it in the past, they said that they would take them all off when they were totally done. Not just that area, but the east side of town as well. So they took them all off, including east side.
Yes, that's what I have been told.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion. Once again, I'd entertain a motion.
The Lincoln Avenue, Dayton Avenue, and Beach Street Improvements Project Complete and to start the sixty-day lean process.
Who seconded that? Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Duvall and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Savedra to declare the Lincoln Avenue, Dayton Avenue, Beach Street Improvement Project Complete and Start the Sixty-Day Lean Process. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Move on to seven K. Discuss to cancel the December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty regular meeting. I know this is something we usually do every year. Because there's generally nothing there to discuss. I don't know. With the agenda we got tonight, it should be covered everything.
I know we've been having a lot of meetings lately, so I don't know. I mean, now that everything is Zoom. I I think if we need a meeting, we should just go ahead and keep it the way it is. I know that this one was pretty jam-packed, but I mean, I sure don't want to go into the new year and have to have not only the regular three meetings, but have another one or two more on top. So do you think that we need another meeting or are you think we're okay?
Can we use another one?
I think staff anticipates that this would would have been the last meeting of two thousand and twenty. That's one of the reasons why we have all of our updates stacked pretty high on here. Our biggest concern was the interfund loan and we got that covered. And so that would be that's what we probably would have brought up at the next meeting. But I think we're covered for this year.
And we do have the resolution that authorizes the city manager and the Administrative Services Director to pay the last council payable that would have been on December twenty eighth. And then we would be bringing that forward to council for the first council meeting.
For approval.
So hopefully that means that when we start the new year, January, we'd only have the three meetings. We wouldn't have to add on all these other special meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. I'd entertain a motion. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Belton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Savedra to cancel the December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty regular meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Moving on to seven L. Set agenda for the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one study session.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two items that could be on the study session. The first one of the year, one is a fifteen-minute executive session for update on potential litigation. And the second one would be selection of the Y V cog committee. Our our other committees and boards are are on a two-year cycle and this is the the middle year, so we have too small, we have two items to go for the next study session.
Sound good, everyone? Okay. Move on to item eight. Council meeting reports and community announcements. Councilman Seha.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Jimenez.
Yes, I did attend the cog meeting that we had on the ninth of December. It was the shortest meeting we've ever had. It only lasted an hour. I couldn't believe it. It was great. We did have a presentation by the Yakima Valley Tourism Director, John Cooper. Of course, we all know tourism is down, but the brighter side of it, we weren't as low as other places as far as our tourism money that we were losing. So he thinks it's going to take all of next year, though, for it to become a little bit more normal when it comes to tourism and tourism funding. So not good, but like he said, it's better than it could have been. But what really got to me was it was December is when cog gives out the Outstanding Service Award. I try not to cry and so they gave it to Norm Childress, which is very well deserved. My concern is that they always wait till somebody drops dead before they give them the award. It would be nice if they gave the award when someone was still alive. Because no, I mean, you know, this has happened in the past and I'm just thinking, you know, we have lots of great people out there that are very deserving. You know, I was thinking of Al Hubert. I was thinking of John Hodgkins from Union Gap. I was thinking of more from Grandview. There's so many individuals that are so deserving that it would be nice to give them the award when they're still alive, instead of giving it to them when they're dead and nobody knows. So anyway, I just hope they change it so they're given while the person's still alive and not when they die. So that was my biggest one was recognizing that Norm got the Outstanding Service Award. That's all.
Thank you. Garcia.
Nothing to report.
Belton.
Uh, nothing to report. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duvall.
Uh, yes, I wanted to remind everyone, I know that Lance is probably going to talk about it, but tonight is the first night of extreme weather shelter. I want to thank the people that are organizing that and are providing a shelter again for the homeless in our community. I also want to remind people that I'm still looking for help. I am organizing serving dinner on Sundays. I'm looking for disposable serving trays and napkins and disposable serving utensils that I can take. Any help would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Savedra.
I have nothing to report for the good of the order.
Thank you. Well, the other thing I noticed is is Councilwoman Duvall, there's no crane in your picture.
Rain? Outside?
We'll move on to item nine, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things to update council on. One is the extreme weather shelter. It is tonight's its first night. I I kind of stopped by on my way here. It looked like they had nine people participating tonight on the first night. Camp Hope and Mike K have been supplying meals to about a hundred and fifty people on the weekends or a couple of times a week. So they're hopefully going to gain some trust and and more people will take advantage of the the extreme weather shelter. Like to thank Yakima Valley farm workers, they stepped up and donated the building. Again, they had their contractors come in and install a new door that was midway in the building, so now there's enough room for the COVID spacing now that we have to have to operate that. Talking with Mike K this afternoon, he's he's pretty hopeful that in the next two weeks he'll have enough donations that he may be able to expand the the twelve-hour shelter to a twenty-four-hour shelter. So we're excited to hear that. He's got a private donor that he's visiting with on that subject and hopefully he'll be able to to bump that up to twenty-four hours. So we appreciate all that help. Also, tonight I'd like to thank Public Works for getting all the the seasonal lights and the banners up. And I'd like to thank Jody Milton, his family for coming around with his bucket truck. It's big enough so we could restring the lights on the Christmas tree. The our refuse group, Barry Gatlin and Jim Allen also assisted with that and also Ideal who donated some more light so we could get that that tree dressed up and and looking good. So I appreciate all that help. I'd like to let council know that the Police Department is is offered two lateral officers a position. They've gone through the first couple of rounds of testing and they're they're pre enrolled into into the academy, which is the short two-week academy. And that'll be pending on how well they do on their their psychological, their evals that are happening this week. So the the beauty of that is is where we've been working with four, three, four, and five vacancies in our police department. When we get the, if we're able to get these two hired, we'll only have a single vacancy. So we're really appreciative of the opportunity to hire and get a a full police force rolling again. So we appreciate that. Let's see, there's some other updates on some projects, the the Public Works Building. Hopefully we'll go to go to add in first week of January. Most of the design is complete. I guess all the design is complete on the on the building and and with the architect and the site improvements, water, sewer, and road stuff by the the civil engineers. So that'll go up. We they're anticipating owner occupancy December first of next year. So by next year this time, hopefully there'll be a new public works facility. It's been a long road to get there and hopefully we're excited to get that rolling forward. Our West First Street Sidewalk Improvement Project and our Safe Route School Project, which is over by Lincoln School. Those will go out to add the first week of February and hopefully they'll be able to coincide. You know, maybe some of the contractors that have the public workshop will be able to participate in those two small projects. And I I believe that the the second phase of the sewer will also go out in February for for add. And that's about all I have tonight. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Lance, I was going to ask you, I was driving through town this afternoon and I noticed that the trees at Railroad Park are filled with those beautiful black crows. Yeah, you know where I'm going with that, right? Do you have a plan? Is there a plan?
We tried in the past to bring the fire truck in at midnight on a cold night, spray the birds to discourage them from being there. They kind of outs, they're pretty smart birds. By the time we were done spraying, setting up to spray and sprayed a little bit, they all left. And by the time the the fire trucks were gone, they'd come back in. We've talked with the game department. We've talked with a a crow society or something back east and this is a normal grouping of crows, what they do in the winter. They get together for protection and and socialism, they socialize together and they're there and they don't break up again until end of February, first of March, when they start their mating process. So yes, there could be some whitewashing of sidewalks we'll have to take care of. And Public Works is out there making sure when you have a large populations of birds, there could be some mortality and they'll they'll pick that up and and there we are. Be careful walking around the parks right now. So.
Thank you.
It is the Christmas season, though, so they're all going to get to.
Crows in a pear tree.
If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn.